Okay, so I'll call the North Smithfield School Committee Meeting of January eighteenth, two thousand twenty-two to order. Clerk, please call a roll.
Chair Lombardi.
Present.
Mrs. Mayo.
Here.
Mrs. Vada.
Here.
Mr. Connel is noted absent. Mr. Jones?
Here.
Okay.
Okay, we have a quorum, as I mentioned, just on the record. Mr. Connel did mention to me that although he thought he could make it, he did have a hearing tonight, so I'm sure we'll be seeing him soon. Okay, so let's call a pledge of allegiance.
Aye.
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 Pledge of allegiance.
My allegiance.
To the flag.
To the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic.
For which it stands.
One nation.
One nation under God. Indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
So let me recall. Let me get my camera straight. Let me recall that if anybody wants to make any public or community comment, please raise your hand.
Well, at the moment, we don't have any more hands raised.
For the record, Mr. Connel is now on. Welcome, Mr. Connel, and welcome, everyone, also. Okay, I see last call for anyone on public comment or community comment. Superintendent, I do not see anyone. Do you?
No, I have the participants on my screen. We have thirty participants, and no one has their hand raised.
Okay. Then, hearing that, let's move on to the consent agenda. Does anybody have any questions in regards to the consent agenda?
Chair, I actually have a question regarding item one.
Absolutely.
I just wanted to clarify the minutes.
Okay.
So we can either remove, or we can just discuss. It's up to you.
Um, we can go ahead with, if you have a, an amendment or a comment, please.
Yeah, just in the minutes, it was stated that the SurveyWorks was suspended the last two years. It was not the last two years. It had been suspended for two years, so I just wanted to make sure that that was on the record. As not last, the last two years, but it had been suspended for two years.
Thank you. Okay. Does anybody have any other statements or clarifications? Hearing none will move the consent agenda as amended. Is there a motion?
Some hope.
Motion's been made. Is there a second?
A second.
Seconded. Any further discussion? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? The ayes have it. Moving on to, oh, already it's a superintendent's report. Superintendent?
Yeah, so I'm just going to basically talk about two things. I just want to give you a COVID update within our schools. And the principals are with us if you have any specific questions for the schools as it has been for the past couple of weeks, we returned back from break. And then the other piece, along with Superintendent Claire Arnold, I'd like to share with you are the thinking and the process going behind to get the SR three funding application in place. We share that with you. So we've been having, as you know, and I've sent information out to the community, the Department of Health and the CDC have updated some of their guidels and have restructured things to make it easier for healthy kids to stay within school. So that is the Monitor to Stay program, where if somebody unvaccinated is a close contact of somebody in school, they do not automatically have to isolate at home for ten days. It's now five days. But if they don't show any symptoms, they can continue to remain in school, which up through that last semester this year has been very problematic because we were in a position where we had to isolate students because they were a close contact in school, and they remained perfectly healthy during their isolation period. So this change is a nod to that. I can tell you, like, right now, for example, at the high school, we have seventy-five students who are on Monitor to Stay. They're in school. They have not shown symptoms. They have, they have testing available to them if they wish it. But before this change, before we adopted this, those seventy-five students would have had to remain home. So now they can be in school. We also have put in the test to play or test to compete, where our athletes will have a test that day, then, if they had been a close contact with somebody in school, if they, if that game meet or match that evening is taking place. So that's worked out really well, and I have to say that, again, talking to the high school today, that prior to these matches, prior to the games where we were, our kids would be getting on the bus, going to another community, competing against students and from other towns, we actually tested, five students tested positive so far. And that, and so they were able to isolate prior to the game and prior to continued to spread among their teammates or students in other schools. So that's worked really well. Now, on the downside, we're able to keep the healthy kids in school through Monitor to Stay, but we have a lot of kids who aren't healthy. Omicron is just whipping through our buildings right now. And, you know, again, we have a lot of protocols in place, and a lot of the transmission ransom is happening from within the building, specifically around athletics. That seems to be the main area for in, inner-school spread. A lot of family spread in community events and other settings outside of the schools, where maybe the protocols aren't as stringent. Right now, since December twenty-eighth, so this is just before we came back from the winter break, NSCS has had ninety-three students test positive for COVID. We've had ninety-three positive cases, seventeen staff members. The middle school, seventy-five students have tested positive, thirteen staff members. And at the high school, thirty-seven students and six staff members. So we are experiencing the surge within our buildings very, as, very much the same thing as across the state and in other schools. And I'll have to admit, staffing and transportation has proved to be somewhat difficult, but we are truly, fully committed to being in, being in person. We do not in any way, shape, or form want to switch over to distance learning because that is not necessarily best for the kids. And we also have too many family members that don't have the means to provide some sort of childcare or oversight if we were to switch to distant learning. So it's essentially all hands on deck to weather this storm, to keep the schools open, to keep our protocols in place. And really, honestly, just try to get through the next few weeks. We all knew that January was going to be the most difficult time. All indications are that the Omicron variant will spike by the end of this month and settle and start going back down to regular levels, whatever that may be. But really, it's just about keeping schools open, trying to keep the protocols in place over the next couple of weeks. And again, we really have to rely on the parents not to send six kids into school and, you know, and just do everything we can to sort of isolate, keep it safe. One of the things that we really do need to emphasize repeatedly, and I hope the parents will help us with this, is that it is the noses, seeing the noses with the mask below the noses during the day among students. I mean, we, you know, there's constant reminders, just put the mask over your nose. That's all we're asking. Everything else is in place and is good and is moving forward. But maybe we'll have about five percent of the students who, I don't know what it is with the nose. They must be very proud of it, want to display it to everybody, but, but they're often visible. So it sort of defeats the purpose of masking. So that's, that's where we stand with the COVID outbreak. And again, we keep schools open, we keep things moving forward, we keep the protocols in place. We ask the parents for patients in someplace, some areas, and really help with their children as far as the masking. Also, with monitoring symptoms, whether there's symptoms within the family or the student, just don't send the kid to school. You know, we'll make up the work, we'll provide extra lessons. And no, I've had a lot of questions about why don't we do full distance learning? And for those who want, just like last year, you know, we had that hybrid, in-person plus at-home learning. We're not equipped to do at-home learning this year. Last year, things were set up for that hybrid environment. This year, it's all about being all in. So that's the focus. Now, I don't know if you have any questions specifically about schools, about COVID, about the spread, about the protocols, before we move on to the next section with our S R grants?
Mini members? Mr. Connel? I got a hum. I don't know if anybody else did. We can't hear you, I don't believe.
Yeah, something's wrong with your audio.
Mr. Connel said, forget it, doesn't have a question anymore. But I, Superintendent, I'd like to compliment you on keeping schools open, keeping sports going. I know it's very difficult, but thank you very much. It's very important to the kids. We need to keep schools open. So thank you very much. Appreciate that.
Well, I want to give the real kudos, too, to the principals and especially our nurses and that cat. You know, especially with athletics. There's an awful lot of testing and tracing and a lot of work that goes into keeping everything running. And they've been doing a marvelous job. I feel terrible for, I mean, Jen and Rachel over at NSCS, they're ready to open. And then we had, two Sundays ago, I think about twenty percent of the staff was out. And to try to arrange the coverage, you know, for the students because we don't want to split students up during the day and send them to other classes. We want to match them up with a teacher, adult, a substitute teacher. Especially also the, the staff over at NSCS because they've been routinely giving up their planning periods, their academic prep period to teach, going to teach, to provide class coverage. In fact, last week, both the principal and assistant principal were substitute teaching because that's how short we were at staff. And our assistant superintendent Claire Arnold went over there, and she was teaching classes as well. You know, so it's, it really is all hands on deck approach. Fortunately, though, Claire came back to the office, and she had seconded time working with the kids, and she really started to question why she's doing this job and not back in the classroom. So, you know, I tried very hard to sort of distract her from that line of thinking. Speaking of Claire Arnold, one of the things that actually Claire is taking the lead on this is the S R funds. So we do, in the next couple of weeks, have to apply for the grant funds. Now, this is one and a half million dollars over several years to focus on the student, social, emotional support, academic support, and also healthy facilities. So Claire is taking the lead on this. So if, what I'll do is I'll just turn this over to Claire so that she can talk about the process and where we're, where we stand with it right now.
Thank you, Mr. Saint Gene. I did thoroughly enjoy subbing, I would have to say. But with regards to S R, so S R E, it's E S S E R, is the Elementary and Secondary Education Relief Act. The funding is to help ensure that districts and schools can continue to operate safely, support sustained access to in-person instruction, address social, emotional, mental health, and academic needs of our students due to COVID nineteen. We're in the planning phase of S R three. We've elicited some input from various stakeholders. The district launched a web-based survey. The survey received three hundred and thirty-four responses, which was pretty good. We were happy with that. Seventy percent of our respondents were parents and guardians. Thirty percent of, of the three hundred and thirty-four were educators, staff, and community members. The results identified our priorities as implementation of additional intervention opportunities throughout, throughout the district that take place specifically during the school day. And then the second priority was implementation of after-school programs and academic interventions. Our third priority is providing additional mental health services and supports to our students, particularly at the middle school and high school levels. And our next priority, our fourth priority, and that's what we were looking really to gain, was continue to repair and improve school facilities to reduce the risk of virus trans, transmission. So all survey results were reviewed by each individual school improvement team. We call them sit teams. The school improvement teams consist of groups of educators and other stakeholders, community members, parents, students, who inform important governance decisions and leading to school improvement initiatives. Each sit team made specific recommendations for the development of the S R three plan. The District Professional Development Advisory Committee, teacher leaders, and the administrative team have also given input and feedback to inform the plan. And so I'm going to give you examples of how we take those recommendations and what that would look like in practice. And so if we hired one or even possibly two student assistant counselors at the middle school and high school level to improve communication skills, social engagement, social connectedness by participating in like counseling or enrichment activities provided by student assistant counselor or counselors. We actually had talked at great length in our school improvement teams and administratively of even if we, if we hire someone, we want them to have a different hours than a teacher scheduled, to come in later and stay later, so they'd be available every single day for a hundred and eighty days after school to either provide counseling or to provide those enrichment activities that all students could participate in. We'd like to expand our math intervention program at our middle school. Our preliminary results of this year's program has shown success, and we'd be like, really like to extend on that initiative. Hiring part-time, also hiring part-time teacher assistants at the lower elementary to support our students with reading and literacy instruction. That's something that we were able to do this year with S R two. And again, we've found that to be successful, and we'd like to continue that with our, with our youngest students. Provide high dosage tutoring after school and synchronous in the evening, like tutoring to students to provide instructional support to students to increase reading and math achievement. And the, the evening synchronous idea really came from students who are actually on our school improvement team at the high school. And they said, after school, sometimes they just need a break, and they want to go home, or they have after-school activities or clubs or, or sports. But if someone, if they could have teachers that were available at seven o'clock at night, that could just, you know, they could jump onto a Zoom meet and, and ask for extra instruction, that they would be more prone to do that. So that's something we definitely want to support. And I thought that was a wonderful contribution from our students. Continue to fund, and this is really important, long and short-term substitute teachers to support the sustained access to in-person instruction. And, and our, everyone has done so much in order to stay open, especially these last few weeks. But a lot has to do with having our substitute teachers and also having building subs. And we've been able to fund them through S R funds. We'd like to implement the right-to-read professional development, which is a new law requiring Rhode Island teachers to participate in the science of reading courses, which are time-consuming and expensive. So these funds will help move us along and implement those requirements. We'd also like to hire an additional intervention or elementary teacher. And similar to what we did this year in second grade, it wouldn't necessarily be in second grade, but could next year. But what we were able to do is hire another teacher, which allowed us to lower class size, and then also pair that teacher up with a reading specialist to implement some strategic interventions. And that's shown some great success. So we do want to build on the success that we've been able to have. We'd like to continue the window replacement project at the high school with the cafeteria really being the high priority. The cafeteria will be the first thing we tackle with the windows. And so we will present at school committee meetings, budget committee meetings, in terms of how stakeholder input was taken into account, as well as continue to communicate the district priorities and really plan specifics. The plan's going to be reviewed and revisited every six months. We do have to apply for these funds, but once we apply and get approved, we can then amend the funds when, when the Department of Ed lets us amend. And I'll give you an example. This year, we wanted to do more. We had funds for transportation for an after-school late bus this year at the middle school, high school. Yet we weren't able to take part in that because Deco, we were having such trouble with drivers and, and buses. And so we were able to shift some of the funds that we had slotted for that into something else. And I think it's going to after-school tutoring. So there are times that we can amend, but we do want to have a good, solid plan by the end of this month to the Department of Education. Any, any questions about that?
Thank you. Any questions?
Chair, I have one.
We have you now, Mr. Connel.
Yeah, thank you.
You can go back to the other question also, if you'd like.
Thank you. So I'll be, thank you, Chairman. I'll be, the audience will be very brief. Ms. Arnold, I just wanted to clarify, this next round for S R, this is the last S R round. Am I, is that correct?
Yes, and we have until two thousand twenty-four, it's September thirty-first of two thousand twenty-four, to spend the funds.
Okay, but when you say expand, but that, so in other words, we're looking at basically another two, actually three years of benefits from these, from this last round of S R funds. Is that right?
Well, it's two thousand twenty-two, so.
Yeah, two, three, four. So we got three years. I'm just, I just want to point out, we, you know, these come to an end, and this is like, again, we're not at the end, but we're, you know, the end is there, at least at the moment. And the, well, I was like, two questions. And the only question, Mr. Chair, I had, the other question I have for the superintendent, which is this. Superintendent, obviously, the Department of Health Director is leaving. Has, I was wondering, when you were talking under your general school district update, has there been any communication, or are you hearing anything about transition? In other words, I mean, the only thing I, I'm a tiny bit concerned, not overly, but a little concerned about the transition. When Dr. Alexander Nicole Scott leaves, you know, she's been like the, again, the head of the department. And as you said, we're right in the middle. She'll be leaving right around the time when Omicron's hitting its highest point. And I don't begrudge her if I'm leaving. That's not what I mean. But I'm just asking, you know, as, any comments on that or information on that?
I don't have any. Although there was a, oh, I'm going to get in trouble.
Okay, well, I just.
There was a meeting today at eleven-thirty that I completely forgot about, and something may have happened there. But, but thank you for pointing out my shirking of my duty during the day and missing a very important meeting that may have had the information to answer to your question.
Again, I don't need to answer now. I just want to make sure. I just want to, I'm sure the department's working on it. I was just.
Oh, yeah.
What they do for transition.
We have regular Department of Health meetings later on in the week, and those, and I'll be sure not to miss that one either.
So let me answer on behalf of the superintendent. The superintendent isn't aware of any changes that are available right now.
That's a morbid succinct answer. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
I actually have a question, Mr. Chair. Claire, this is a wonderful list of things that we can do. It's exciting, actually. How positive are we? Is the money coming our way a given? I mean, it's a definite, okay?
Yes.
That amount. Okay, wonderful. Thank you. It's a wonderful plan.
Any other questions or comments? Seeing, oh. We're not, I don't know who Deb's iPhone, Debbie's.
Deb's iPhone.
This, we're not into a public comment unless. So let's, let's continue to move on. Superintendent, are you done with your report?
Yes.
Okay, let's move on to informational. So we have some retirements, leave abscences, and appointments. You know, I see that there, you know, the school nurse, Miss Ethia is leaving. That's unfortunate for us. I know she's been a longstanding employee. I also want to congratulate Amy Wright and Christine Lopes on their appointments. I think that'll be a very positive change for the, the school. So I'm very happy to see that. Anybody else have any comments?
Mr. Chair, just again, we appreciate their, their efforts because obviously it's, it's a tough time to transition in, middle of school year, and under the circumstances. By me, I mean the COVID. But again, I ran into them the other night when we had a budget committee meeting last week, and I'm sure we're in very good hands.
Yes. So we have a couple of people that would like to, if you're worried. Suzanne has been working with Renee for a very long time. I think she has a few about Renee. Positive, I'm assuming, yes.
They're all positive. It's really hard to really start. Renee has been in the district for over thirty years. She's worked at Halliwell. She's worked at NSCS. She's been in the PPS department. She literally started in July of the same year that I began. And we've worked so closely together. She is just my right arm, my left arm. She's amazing at what she does. She truly can multitask like no one else, and she goes above and beyond. I don't know how many people realize this, but when she was at Halliwell, she started Box Tops for Education, and she continued to do that, you know, as long as she could, even when she moved over to PPS. And so she's always there to help. She's had numerous roles in the union. She's just really done a phenomenal job. I'm very sad about her leaving. I'm happy that she's going on to retire and to enjoy some time with her family, which she totally deserves. But I'm very sad that, that she's moving on. She's very skilled. One of the things that, you know, I have to say about Renee is, she is, you know, I can be very passionate, and sometimes I can, you know, get, you know, loud when I'm upset or when I'm excited about it, about something. Renee is just the most even-keeled person. She never gets upset. She is the same way every day. She's got a great disposition. She's wonderful with families on the phone. She just has a lot of really great qualities. I wish she was on tonight to hear all of this. I'll have to let her listen to the tape, but she means a lot to me and many, many people, and I'd like to celebrate her. But because of COVID, I think we're going to hold off and do that when the warmer weather comes and when COVID seems to subside a little bit. I'd also like to say just a few words about Ann Rock. And I found out that Ann was retiring when the agenda was posted, and I was very, very sad because Ann is one of those. And I was very, very sad because Ann is one of those instructional assistants that again, goes above and beyond the call of duty. And the students just love her. She's always there. She's so dedicated and passionate about her job. I know Christine Welch is really sad about her moving on. But again, Ann, I'm, I'm thrilled for your retirement. I'm happy that you're going to get some time to enjoy life. But we're very, very sad to see you go.
Nicely said. Thank you. And thank you for your years of service. Appreciate it.
Any further comments or questions in regards to item number four?
I, I did have a conversation with Jeanine, with Jeanine Ethier today. And I told her that I was going to be striking this item from the agenda. I, I just want to say, yeah, I've, I've had. I've had the pleasure of working directly with Jeanine, that Jeanine this year. She's been part of the, we have a text messaging group, the three nurses and myself. And my goodness, they are just so active and chatty all weekend long. Sometimes I wish I wasn't part of this group. But there's just always, always working, always information going back and forth. And, and just trying to help each other out. So I know Jeanine wanted to retire midway through the year, but she had so much to do. She, she wanted to see the year through, and so that's why she stayed on.
It's great. Thank you. I see, I believe Ms. Lopes has her hand up.
Thank you very much. As Mr. St. Jean and Mr. Rathbonn had said, all Mrs. Mrs. Ethier, Ms. Rock, and Renee Dunton, I've worked with all of them. I've been in the district 20 years and it, when I saw the agenda and I saw the names on it, it is hard to lose such amazing people. I mean, I worked with Ann personally at the middle school. She was in my classroom and she is just an absolute joy. When kids met Ann, they were drawn to her. They, they just, she could get the toughest kids to just melt in her hands. She could get them to work. She could get them to laugh. She wanted them, they wanted to be in school with her. And then due to some repositioning, the high school, I'll, I'll, to this day, I'll say stole her. But they were lucky to get her. And we are going to miss Ann. I know she became a grandmom and she's, she's a great, she loves her family so much. And she truly deserves the time with her family. She was part of our school family and we really are going to miss her. Janine, I mean, through COVID, when I was at the high school and I was brand new and I didn't know, she was just so kind. And Renee Dunton, every morning when she walks by, she just smiles and she's, you're right, she's always the same. So we're losing three really great people, but I'm very happy for them. It's a great time in their life for them. So I wish them all well.
Thank you. Mr. McGee?
Yes, thank you. I just wanted to echo what they said about Janine. Janine's been a rock at my school for many, many years. And we, we have a saying over there about the karma we see, Janine, the more serious the situation is. It just seems she has that demeanor to calm everybody down. But we actually honored her last year at graduation because of her above average effort that she puts in daily. And she, she's just unbelievable. I also want to congratulate Ann Rock. She, she's fairly new to my school, but I, I have conversations with her every morning. She's, she's just a wonderful person, a great, great teacher, a nice, nice, nice lady. And I wish her the best. I, I also want to recognize Mrs. Valero's. She's on the retirement list as well. She's been a department chair for many years. Another excellent quality person. She's done a marvelous job for us and our students, and I wish her the best.
Thank you. Very nice. If, if I could just say, there's a correction for Ms. Amy Wright. She is, she will be assistant principal, but right now it's supposed to be Dean of Students. So she's being hired as Dean of Students, which will convert into an assistant principal over the summer. That doesn't take away from how happy we are to have her on board. And I just love the fact that she's gone from president of the, the union to an administrator. But you know what? She was brilliant then. She was, she'll be brilliant now. I mean, we, we, we actually have a, a wealth of internal candidates. Even though we, we add, we posted for the position, we interviewed a couple of people from outside the district, a couple of people from in the district. But we just have such strong in-district support and potential moving into the administration role. And again, I just want to thank Christine Lopes for becoming principal. And this is one of the things that's, that's always tough during a, a changeover is that when one person leaves, and as Mr. Lahar left, I mean, he, he opened the building. He had the institutional knowledge of the building of the district. But you know what? Christine has that too. She's been in the building. She's been in the building, not just as an administrator, but as a teacher, as an assistant principal and now principal. You know, just the energy between her and Amy, the intelligence, the dedication, the love of the kids. Middle school is an exciting place. It, it, it's wonderful. So.
Thank you, Superintendent. Any further comments or questions? We'll move on to old business, the fiscal year 22 operating capital budget. Lisa, do you have anything, anything to add on that?
No, nothing new to report.
Okay. In regards to the presentation and approval of the fiscal year 23 operating budget. I know that we met, the subcommittee met and voted out the recommendation, which was substantially similar, I believe, to what you submitted. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. So do you want to just give an overview? And then if there's any committee members who want to ask questions, we can hear from that.
Sure. I'll, I'll, I'll just be very brief because this, this is all in writing. It's laid out before you. You'll have copies of it. It will be posted up on the website. It will be sent to the town council. It will be easily accessible by a lot of people to take a look at the, the. But what I'll do is just hit on some of the main points. So, yes, there is, there, you know, we are looking at a budget increase, which is something we wrestle with every year. But the key things it comes from are contractual salary increases, increase in healthcare and benefits. Our changing demographics. I mean, we have to, we have to provide much more support type of programs now than we have in the past, and that, that seems to increase every year. And then specifically really around this year is the cost of, the cost of inflation. You know, so just as everything, the prices are creeping up all across the country. I mean, it is affecting energy for us. It's affecting supplies and materials. And it's, it's affecting a number of things. So the increase that we put in the budget is reflecting some of these things that we, we really don't have much control over. Now, we do have a couple of different models for state aid to education. But just to break that down, the good news is that even in the bad model, depending on what, which direction the general assembly goes with, North Smithfield will get an increase in state aid education. Our best case scenario where our state aid increases by 372,000 means that we're basically with all that stuff that was up at the top, looking for around a 2% increase from the town for the budget. Now, that's the best case scenario. I was told last week that that scenario is no longer. What we did factor our budget on was the worst case scenario, where we will be get, still getting an increase of 169,000. All right. But in that scenario, to do all of these things above, we're looking at just under a 3% increase. But I want to give a couple of caveats on that. Number one, this best case scenario, as it was designed at the time, isn't necessarily going to happen, but there is other pieces, other things that are, are bills that are being proposed, other things that may happen in legislation and at the general assembly that will still increase state aid to education. Number one is not to necessarily affect us, but the, to increase the success factor, which is additional revenue for children in poverty. And that would go from 45, 40 to 45%. Now, we do have every year an increase, an increasing amount of students in poverty, but nowhere near to the amount that the urbans have. The other thing that they're looking at possibly doing is reimbursing districts for high-cost special education. Now, you know, we have worked very hard to bring our neediest, most at-risk, most medically fragile students back into the district. But there inevitably, there are students who have requirements that far outstrip what we're able to provide. And they need a clinical environment. Now, right now, we have 16 students in outplaced education. Any of those students can run a tuition from 80,000 a year to 120,000 a year. And then there's also transportation, so that, you know, the 16 students we have with the services that they're, they require and transportation run about an $800,000 tuition. One of the things that might happen, and this is the push, is to up the aid from the state for high-cost special education, which if that were to happen, would go a long way to balancing the budget. So we're hoping that this number comes down. Okay, that we can still offer the services. We're not adding anything new that's not part of S R. We're looking always to refine what we have and not keep expanding and hiring new people and creating new programs because we are budget locked. The other thing that we truly understand is that just as we're struggling with inflation and increasing costs, we understand that families, residents of North Smithfield are struggling with inflation and increasing costs. We're not going to try to compound that with more, you know, more, more, more cost items, request for more revenue. We're just trying to keep it as neutral as possible. So just to highlight a couple of items here. I've already talked about salaries and benefits. Those, those are the two main areas that, that, that we have some contractual increase. And you can see the salaries, the change, an increase of 2.5% in benefits for. Now, we still haven't been able to adjust this to actual. It will be a recalculation sometime in March that we'll be able to, hopefully readjust this to actual and bring it down. From the staffing standpoint, we haven't hired any new staff in the local budget. Any new staff that we've hired this year and we anticipate next year will come through S R funds. So we're keeping the local budget neutral for staffing. Now, under district operations, we do have a 7% increase under central office. And that's largely made up for increases in transportation, increases in out-of-district tuition. Not the special education tuition, but we're talking CTEs and charters and vocational. And I'll highlight a couple of those things. Facilities, we're looking for a 7% increase, and that's, that's really just attached to increase in, in electrical, in propane, in gasoline. General utilities call. A decrease in technology, slight, a decrease in curriculum. Because again, we've made some good investments in curriculum in the previous years with the help of the town council. And we still have a couple of new pieces of curriculum to purchase, but Department of Ed is not ready yet on what they're recommending as high-quality curriculum. Rather than keep this inflated, we're going to lower it because we need to take a year off and let the Department of Education catch up. Pupil personnel services, again, that's working to bring, that's a decrease, working to bring students back from expensive out-of-place, out-of-district placement back into their home school, in their own community where, where they belong. Now, transportation is the big increase. All right, it, it's a big portion of the central office of our operational budget. This increase actually is a lot lower than what most districts have seen because during the lockdown period, the bus companies lost a lot of money. So when we came back into full in-person learning and a lot of districts, their bus contracts were up and they had to go off RFP and get new contracts. They, they were getting 17% increases, you know, over the previous year. Because again, the bus companies needed to make up that number. Now, we negotiated with Daco for a two-year extension on our current contract. And we didn't see a 17% increase or like a 3%, you know, in that area. I have it specifically in here what, what, what the increases were. They were much lower than many districts around the state were able to negotiate. The other increase comes in the tuition, out-of-district tuition, EEs and charters. And I'm going to just point out, well, I'll point out that unfortunately, it goes across. Here's a breakdown of the CTE programs and the charter schools and the vocational schools. Across the years, how many this year are in each of these locations? How many we estimate next year? We did put into a, a significant increase for, for tuitions. Because to be honest, we underestimated, when we put in for the FY '22 budget, we underestimated how many students we would have to pay tuition for. And what happened here is something that we had not seen before. We're going to have to figure it. We for the first time had students going to Barville High School, to Cumberland High School, to Lincoln High School, to Situate High School. All right, they didn't go to the neighboring district high schools before. We did not anticipate this amount. So we had underestimated for the FY '22 the tuitions that we would have to pay. Now, one of the things I could say is that in a number, and I've talked to the parents who have decided to go to one of the CTE program in another district. The majority of them actually were folks that moved into North Smithfield from these communities who wanted to use the CTE programs to keep the kids back at their home school with their friends. So we had a couple of, a couple of times in which, yep, they, they really wanted that CTE program that we could not offer at North Smithfield High School. For the most part, it was to go back to their home school where they had just moved from, be with their friends. But again, in the CTE world, that's something that we have to pay tuition for. It's allowable. So what I do want to point out is that. right now we have eleven students, North Smithfield students, who are enrolled in a CTE program in a neighboring high school. Eleven North Smithfield students that were paying tuition to go to neighboring high schools. We have twelve incoming CTE student neighboring high schools. So we're again, keep maintaining a balance, not ideal, we'd rather have more coming in than going out, but you know, this is, this is better than nothing. We're maintaining that balance and we just continue to be competitive and we hope to grow. The other thing that happened with vocational piece is that when Saka Career and Tech has traditionally been our feeder, you can see the numbers back in the previous years, twelve students, sixteen, eight, six, and then it declined. What's picked up though is Davies. Davies started to become employed. So North Smithfield students didn't automatically go to Kentucky Career Tech, they could now choose. Right, so again, a little more competition out there. So that's essentially what I'm going to, and I'll just also point out here, the out-of-district tuitions for special education. Now, back in seventeen eighteen, we had twenty-seven students that were paying, you know, district tuitions. Again, some clinical, special behavioral programs, medical-related. We dropped it down to twenty-four, eighteen to seventeen, and this year we have fourteen students. So we're continuously trying to bring students back into the district and offer service for them at a much reduced rate and what it would cost to, you know, send them out of district. So I'll leave it at that, I don't know if you have additional questions, but all of this will be posted online. We have all of the numbers here, the trends over years, the recommendations. I know we're going to be having a number of budget committee meetings with town. I'm gonna leave it at this, and if you have any questions, please feel free.
Sorry, does anybody have any questions in regards to the budget?
I don't have a question, but I would just like to say that, once again, it's really very impressive. It's a job well done, and obviously, a lot of work went into this, but it's very clear and very concise, and congratulations, it's a great job.
Mr. Chair.
Sure, Mr. Donald.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, again, we were both at the, several of us were at the meeting last week, and I just wanted to point out and reiterate something that Superintendent touched on, and we also talked about with Claire. And that is that when we look at those numbers, the people who we would hire through Esser funds for, I don't want to say support, but for various support related to the pandemic and pandemic-related issues, they would be there through Esser funds, they don't become part of our, you know, they're there as long as we have the funds, like that's one of the reasons why I asked how long the funds will exist, but I think people should know that when they see the numbers, that again, the people from Esser are not like in our traditional staff, I mean, they're in the building doing important jobs, but they would be, again, they're funded solely through Esser. And I just had one question, I believe I know the answer too, but Superintendent, we were talking about those high district tuitions, but that is one of the things, like if the state takes over the high and special ed, that would be, what was the plan, would we be receiving the money or would it just be like a direct pay? Is there any idea how that would work? I mean, it would come out of, it would save our budget, right?
Yeah, it would, and again, I don't know what shape the legislation will take on this. The other thing that they're also looking at is to, a number of years back, they moved a lot of the pension burden to the districts. There's talk about pulling some of that back to the state level again, and again, that would be some relief on at the district end. There's also some discussion about doing a whole harmless for decreases in enrollment for at least a short amount of time. And then there's also some talk about putting in some transitional aid for state aid, because what makes it very difficult and frustrating, very difficult to budget and frustrating for all of our towns is that one year, for example, we'll get three hundred thousand extra in state aid. The next year, we may be under four hundred thousand in state aid. So it makes it almost impossible to budget and plan long-term when state aid keeps fluctuating up and down. So there's also planning to get some transitional money so that if the formula hits you and you go from having, you know, you move into a deficit, you know, for the state aid calculation, there are some funds to balance it, so that swings aren't as dramatic as they have been. A lot of the talk, a lot of the planning right now, and there's not much time, is not just to put in a short-term solution to get us all the state aid for this year, but something that will hold up long-term. So again, we wait. The good news, though, is that all the different calculations we've looked at, North Smithfield will get an increase. You know, it depends to what level.
Thank you.
Great, thank you. I know Mr. Jones texted me and said he lost power, so if he's not on, that would be the reasoning, he's trying to get back on, he said. Is there any further questions in regards to the budget? Lisa, do you want to help me with the motion? I know that you'd like a specific motion on moving this forward.
I think it would be just a motion to approve the budget draft and move it forward to the town council and the budget committee.
So, are you looking for?
Yes, yes, please.
I will move, I will, so moved.
Okay, motion to maids, is there a second?
Second.
Seconding, any further questions? All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Yeah, I have it, I see Mr. Jones is back and I believe he said aye.
That sounded like an aye to me.
I did, I'm on my phone and my
Okay, thank you, Mr. Jones. Moving on to the fiscal year twenty-three capital improvement budget.
So this is the capital request that goes to the town every year. And it is significantly reduced because for the first time in as many years as I've been here, we can eliminate a million dollars required to replace the turf field and the track that has been. So hallelujah, thank you. So technology, we're pushing off any technology requests from the town, not asking next year. This item here, a cargo van, Mr. Sebby has had this on the list for quite a few years, our box truck, just keep thinking that much older. He would like very much to replace the old big box truck with a little cargo van. Now, the other thing that at some point, we may ask for a passenger van as well, to be able to transport kids during the day. You know, our transition students, our students who are between eighteen and twenty-two, they do work placements, work projects. It would be nice if we could just transport them out to the site to not have to rent the school bus every time, or a small team after school, group of kids after school today, you know, but anyway. At some point, a cargo van would be fantastic and a passenger van.
I think we should tell Mr. McGee that it was the students that said, "Mr. McGee can drive us around, if you buy us a passenger van, he'll take us to field trips after school."
Yeah, I think if he doesn't have a chauffeur's license already, we can arrange for him to get a chauffeur's license and, you know, set him out driving.
I'll be happy to.
Second. Is that a motion?
So, so the other thing we put in for is thirty-five thousand dollars in classroom renovations. Again, this is really supplies and materials, it's not labor because our maintenance department is just incredibly talented. They're doing all the renovations in-house, we would just like to purchase the furniture and the desks and, you know, just upgrade all of that furniture and, you know, do some more renovations. This one right here, the two hundred thousand dollars, I wish it could be more. Maybe it would be, that would be, that would be great if somebody wanted to fund that. This is the money that goes into the revolving fund for the RIDE-approved projects. All of these projects that were eligible for a forty percent reimbursement rate, except you need the money in order to purchase the thing, the service, fix the window, put the new roof on, update the electrical, the plumbing, the heating to get the forty percent back. And the forty percent that we get back goes back into this fund, which then gets invested in the next round of improvement. So really, from a fiscal standpoint, a, you know, good money spent, anything that goes into the RIDE-reimbursable capital project is money very well spent. The other piece that, again, this is something that we've asked for a couple of years, is a generator over at NSCS. So the middle and high school have generators, it's great, power goes out, you switch over to generator. Elementary loses power. That's it, they've lost power, they've lost heat. If the power stays off long enough, now the water circulators aren't running, and after a day or two, you turn on the faucets and you have brown sludge coming out. You know, if we had a generator, we could keep the water pumping, we could keep the building, you know, rolling, especially as we get into colder weathers and, I mean, this weekend, for example, we did have a pipe burst over at the high school. This is the second pipe burst in as many weeks, an older building, we would love to be able to update that plumbing. But we have to really keep our eye on and maintain these for the weekends, especially at NSCS where they don't have an automatic backup power generator. So fortunately, the high school was caught early enough, and it wasn't a power outage in this case, it was just so, but that's the thing that we ask for, is the generator.
Thank you, Superintendent, does anybody have any questions? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion to approve, sent to the council and the budget committee.
So moved.
Motion to maids, is there a second?
Second.
Seconding, any further questions? All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
All opposed? The ayes have it. Moving on to item number three, the update on the new concession stands and bathrooms at the turf field complex. I know that the council president, John Birigard, wanted to address this. He asked me to put it on the agenda. Unfortunately for him, he has a meeting also going on right now, council meeting. So he did say he wanted to, that he has good news, wanted to deliver it himself, and asked that this be continued to the next meeting. So I'll entertain a motion to continue this matter to the next meeting.
So moved.
Motion to maids, is there a second? Seconded?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? The ayes have it. Moving on to new business athletic, item number four, athletic field, public usage, use, usage and procedure. Superintendent, I don't know if you want to address this, I know that you sent out a a usage addendum in regards to the turf field. I know it's been awaited by, you know, the council and others, right, how to basically use.
Yeah, so this is basically a set of rules around usage of the field, best practices, not just public, but also within the district. I've held off on doing this a couple of times because we are looking at several different things for the so like, for example, it's, I was looking forward to Mr. Beauregard's presentation on the concession stand because I want to open up the fields for the public to use, but I also have the feeling we're going to be having construction going on around the field, I'm not exactly sure at the what level, what degree we can public, but when we do do so, that's why I wanted to have sort of this set of rules around in place so that we can publish them, we can put some signage, that we have some sort of rule engagement and expectation. So that, you know, as the other piece that we're looking at is doing an RFP for management of this field. So that what we want to do is really tighten up on how the field is scheduled. So that, you know, for example, we often have people who come out to the track and they're walking the track and, you know, having a lovely time, enjoying themselves, then we have a game starting up at four, and they have to, well, they have to leave. Well, they didn't know a game was coming up, you know, we need to publish these things, have it online, so people can active in their time, so that when the fields are to be used by students, it really has to be just the area. When it's rented by a town league or we need to have that out there too, because we can't have everybody using the field at the same time. We also need to have something for weekend control. And, you know, I love the thought of having this open for the community to use or for people to come in. But on the flip side, Monday morning, our custodians are out there picking up all kinds of litter and fixing damage, and it is unfortunate. So we may have to look into putting cameras out there. If we're, if we're, if we have a management company, you know, what kind of oversight or security can they provide on the weekend? Again, we want it to be open, but we also want it to be protected and preserved so that in ten years, we're not doing a full-on replacement, it's just part of the maintenance and we keep it looking clean, we keep it looking professional, and we keep it available. So what I submitted to you was just basically a usage policy, not quite a policy, doesn't necessarily need a school committee vote, but it's a procedure that I certainly would welcome school committee input and discussion for. But I went to a number of sources along with our own, tried to articulate it, encapsulate it, and be very clear on how this facility should be used going forward.
So Superintendent, if I may, in reading through this, obviously, schools have first priority, no matter what, in regards to both the track and the field, correct?
Right, correct.
And then other, and then anyone else who basically uses this needs a permit, at least for the field. Correct?
Right.
So we have some control over the field by doing that, hopefully, and I understand policing it is a different issue.
Right.
The people from North Smithfield can, again, if it's not being used by the school or rented, or there's some type of restriction where maybe there's kids on the field that's properly rented. Other than that, they can use the track as they see fit to walk on it, I assume maybe you'll have some hours, but you know, people in town can use the facility to walk or do whatever. Using it might be a little different, but other than that.
We'd like to have that, and, you know, but again, also attention to the proper footwear, you know, not having food out there on the field, chewing gum, you know, those things, that we would have clearly timed.
Right, and I read that you must adhere to the posted guidelines as well.
Right.
And we, you know, again, I think that we need to be tough on this because we can't have food on the field that's going to wreck the cost. You know, we can't have drinks that will hurt the field, on the field, you know, those type of things. You know, we can't have drinks that will hurt the field, on the field, you know, those type of things. So we agree with you on all.
And that's, it's because this is also a very highly specialized surface, it's not an asphalt track. If it, it really is designed for what it is supposed to be used for, but we don't also want to limit the community from enjoying it.
Great. Anybody have any, any questions, concerns? And again, this can be changed at any time, right, Superintendent? I know that we wanted to come out a little quick on this, to make sure that the town does have, you know, access to the track. But, you know, very limited, you know, situation where not complete use of the field, have to follow the posted guidelines, and we wanted to get all those in place prior to opening it up.
Yes.
Anybody, again, have any further questions? I mean, this is a town facility, you know, we want to welcome the town, you know, we hope that people in town use it, but they have to follow the posted guidelines. And again, our school's priority, if we can rent it, great. If they don't abuse the field, I think that's all positive.
It's a great resource, we just want to protect it and keep it viable for as long as possible.
I think the cameras might be something we have to look into. Yeah, not yet, I'm not, I'm not going to commit to anything yet in terms of that, we'll see where we go, and I think this might be an evolving thing, but I do think it's important that the public knows that we are committed to getting to use this as a facility that the public can use, and again, it's the only thing we have like this in town. We only have other facilities like this, this is a unique, at least, this is a unique public facility. And I'm very committed to making sure we have as much public access as we have while still preserving, and preserving the yeah, you're right, it's not just, it's not just a cinder track, I get it, it's a little different. But I do want to reemphasize, I think the whole committee wants everyone to, we realize this is what this means to town and what an important issue that is. So I'm going to reflect on policy a little more, to be honest with you, but as a first draft, I think it's good.
So do you want to pass this? So that, you know, again, given direction to the superintendent in regards to the town, you know, I mean, town usage?
I'm prepared to pass it, yes, but with the understanding that, you know, depending how things go, we may want to, you know, I don't necessarily see this as a document or policy that'll be rock-solid and etched in stone for the next five years, I see this as something that's going to be malleable in the first, you know, in the first years, we see how people are using it and what kind of issues arise. Again, I'm speaking for myself, I don't know how the other members feel.
Yeah, yeah, and this document here, this isn't a policy, this is a procedure. And so it's designed to be a bit more flexible. You know, I brought it to the school committee, typically the procedures are the things that we run internally. This one, I wanted to bring it to the school committee because it does have this public component to it. And that's why I was looking for your review and feedback on this.
So Superintendent, just to give it a little more bite, I mean, I would entertain a motion to support the usage addendum as presented for the Veterans Memorial Field and Stadium. If anybody wants to make that motion?
So moved.
Motion to be made, is there a second?
Second.
Seconding. Any further questions or discussion?
I actually just have a question. When, I'm sorry, when might this be open for public use? Because I know you were concerned about the construction of the concession stand, and that obviously could create a problem.
Yeah, and I believe that, again, I, you know, I know Mr. Borogard is going to talk about, but I think the they're looking for around a spring completion of this, again, but I don't know, I don't know how much space the construction is going to take up, and, you know, I'm sure that whole parking area will have to be gated off. So I, again, I don't know what this is going to look like. I do want to open it up, but we may have something else going on that sort of delays that.
Again, I'm just gonna, I'm sorry, I'm just gonna reiterate, I'm prepared to support it now, but I go see how it goes and see what the public response is, because, again, it's the only thing we have like this in town that's open to the public or that's accessible, we recall, it's a public facility, let me rephrase that. And of course, it's kids first, but it is, you know, we don't have, we don't have much in this way. So it's one of the few facilities we have, and all I'm just saying is, I'm going to support this, but, you know, I'd really want to revisit it if it's, if people feel it's not, at least revisit if people feel it's not working.
Yeah, I agree with you. Any further discussion? All in favor? Oh, good.
Yeah, the only thing I wanted to say was that I don't want to tie the superintendent's hands as he moves to further develop these guidelines, and so I don't know if we could phrase the vote in such a way that gives him the the ability to be able to work with the community to amend the language as appropriate.
So I said support, so I don't think that, I don't, we're not taking it as a policy, we're supporting what this says. Obviously, if there's a safety issue, or there's any changes that need to be made, it's under his jurisdiction. I just wanted to try to lend support to having this type, you know, giving, backing up the superintendent in regards to this. But he is, you know, again, he said it's a it's not a policy, it's a
Procedure.
Procedure.
Procedure, so it's under his jurisdiction, I just wanted to lend some support to him.
Okay.
All right, so all, any further discussion? All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? The ayes have it. Is there any further business? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Motion to be made, is there a second?
Second.
Seconding. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? The ayes have it, we're adjourned. Thank you, everyone.